Welcome to the City of Forest Park, Forest Park City Council Meeting Number 1239, November 17, 2014. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Haller Roll, please.
Burns.
Here.
Cottle.
Here.
Herbie.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lives.
Here.
Sethon.
Here.
Was there a motion, Mr. Burns?
I move to excuse Councilwoman Herbie.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we excuse Councilwoman Herbie. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to excuse Councilwoman Herbie, let it be sought, shown by the sign of voting aye.
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 Post, Councilwoman Herbie is excused. Okay. Is there a motion for Mr. Lives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to amend the agenda for tonight for Item D and to postpone that item and remove it from tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we amend the agenda to postpone Item D, remove Item D from the agenda and postpone it. Is there a discussion on the motion in the second? Yes.
Can I just ask that everybody get them to me as soon as possible?
Okay, I would, rather than put that in the motion, would you do that when you get to your report?
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no, no discussion on the motion to amend, will the clerk Haller Roll on the motion to amend the agenda?
Burns.
Yes.
Cottle.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lives.
Yes.
Sethon.
Yes.
The motion passes, Item D on the agenda has been removed and postponed. We'll move back to Item Number Two on the agenda, the minutes, one should have received a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is Item Number Three, Presentations. I believe there's a presentation of Business of the Month. The November Business of the Month Award is New Saw Glass Works, Mr. Brown.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you very much. As all of you know, we just celebrated, and I want to thank all of you for attending. Those of you who were able to join us for the Business Recognition Breakfast earlier this week, as you, or last week, as you know, over the past two years, we've seen $30 million in new business investment on projects that created or retained some 1,300 jobs in the community. Two of the major reasons for this are our ability to attract new business investment to the community and to fill some of the vacant or undeveloped properties that are here in Forest Park. Our November Business of the Month is an example of both of those objectives. New Saw Glass Works recently purchased a building at the end of Kemper Springs Drive, and the Economic Development Commission wanted to call attention to that investment. New Saw is a one-of-a-kind public art access facility devoted to creating and promoting glass art. Earlier this year, the organization acquired and renovated a building on Kemper Springs Drive, and their new facility features one of the only hot glass art studios in the Midwest. New Saw staffs and students not only create pieces for sale in their gift shop, they also offer custom glass design services and educational instruction for all those who are interested in this unique art form. Indeed, New Saw Glass Works offers a variety of solutions to all of your glass art needs, including blown, flame-worked, infused glass, or a combination of all three. Artists, designers, and glass enthusiasts from across the country come together to share, learn, and grow as individuals and as a community. If you've ever thought about trying glass art, New Saw offers a wide variety of courses for students of all ages and skill levels, and whether you want to create glass art for a living, for a living space, or just want to make a small piece to see what it's like to handle this exciting material, New Saw is the place for you. They also offer studio tours and demonstrations to groups of any size, and New Saw even partners with local school districts. Their management team is hoping to partner with our own Wittenwood City Schools later this year. The artists at New Saw make custom glass pieces for their customers based on their drawings, imaginations, and memories. Indeed, New Saw is the perfect place, and this is the shameless plug, is the perfect place for that unique holiday gift that you're looking for. Their popular holiday sale starts on November 24th from 9:00 to 5:00 at their studio. Daily sales and promotions can also be found on their Facebook page, and please try to stop in for the free glass blowing demonstrations that will be held throughout the holiday season. With all of this, we wanted to welcome New Saw to our community. Unfortunately, Mayor, the members of, the owners of the company were busy, I think, shoveling their drive this morning, and asked if I could take this award for them and deliver it, and I'll do that on their behalf.
I know you mentioned, I wondered what their address was, because I'm looking for you.
And I do have it for you, hold on. They are located at 11925 Kemper Springs Drive. That's at the bottom of the cul-de-sac at Kemper Springs in the Kemper Meadow Business Center.
Thank you, Paul.
Any further? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Moving into Item Number Four, Communication from the Public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. We recognize, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council members, council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the public? If so, please sign in, come up and tell me, tell us your name and where you live.
Now in this list here?
Yes.
Okay. To the mayor, City Council.
Tell us who you are, please.
Oh, I am, I am.
Okay.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Don't rush me.
To the mayor and City Council, my name is Louis Mitchell. I live at 1575 John Quill Meadow Drive. I'm here tonight, kind of embarrassed by the situation that I've been forced to participate I would like to use, I'm with a care group network, we call ourselves CGNN. It's a church-developed network. There's members from the city, I mean, from the city of Forest Park that are in this group. There are four, four to 10 of us, most, and we meet on Tuesday night from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. And we have been using the senior centers of billing over here. Up until recently, we were denied that request. I don't understand the reason why. The information I was given didn't stand up to muster, so to speak. I was told, what if someone else came in, want to use the facility? I said, that's no problem. I gladly relinquished the billing for that period of time, paid on pay, since we've been using it for an extended period of time, and we would like to continue to use the billing for extended period of time. If we've been using the billing for, say, four consecutive week, weeks, and someone comments, hey, I need to use the billing, all I request is send me an email saying, Mr. Mitchell, the billing is, your request for using the billing is suspended for this date, or dates. We do have other dates available to you if you would like to use that date, but what I've been getting is a no. We cannot, or you cannot use the facility. The last time we used the facility was in August of this year, and since that time, since that time, September, October, November, the billing had not been used, and I don't understand the reason why. It doesn't make any sense when you tell us that we can use the facility free for small group meeting, and then we try to use the billing, you shut us down. Telephone calls are not being returned, emails are not being answered. I sent out emails to you, Mr. Hodges, twice. I got nothing back. I don't know if you read your emails or not, but whoever reads your emails, in my personal opinion, they should be fired, because they didn't bring, I am a citizen of the community. I pay taxes, and I probably pay some of the highest taxes based on where I live in the city. Therefore, I think that I should get something back in return. I have been very pleased with the community service I've been having over the years. Yes, some of the things I agree or disagree, but that billing sitting over there, empty. It'd be empty tomorrow. Again, to it, you can go over there for yourself between 7:00 and 8:00, and you'll see. If you think that what I'm saying is false, the police station keep a log. They log everything in, they log everything out. Just make sure you understand what I'm saying, that what I'm saying is factual. There is a trail, and I don't understand why I pay taxes, cannot use the facility on a continued basis when it says that is for that purpose. You know, I, 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 I lived in the city for almost 40 years, and since that 40 years' time, I've had a good rapport with the city, at least I think. But now I need the city's help, which I have never asked the city for anything, and now the city's denying me this request. I think the people in these positions, they are not people-friendly. Some of them are rude. We could talk about this later if you like. Some of them don't answer the telephone call, and I hate to say it this way, but if the leadership, the upper echelon are not following the emails, returning the email, you can't expect anything in fact from the people below. So therefore, what I'm saying is, I would like for you guys to look into this matter, and give me a reason, a real reason, why I cannot use this building. Not because something may happen in the future, things does change. I'm willing to change with that. If so, like I said, if someone come in, want to pay, or want to use the building because I used extended period of time, fine, I have no problem with that. Just, just give me a notice, a notice saying, you've been suspended, and I don't understand why this, my request is so unreasonable. Why can I have the building? Like I said, you check this out for yourself, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
I will personally look into this, and I will guarantee that we will get back with you in the next few days with, with a response to your request.
Thank you.
Ms. Denise?
I just want to make comment, what Mr. Mitchell is saying is true. I've even called for him regarding that. I think, Ray, this is something that you need to look into, because it's a fact, what he just said, what he just stated is a fact, and I think it should be looked into and taken care of immediately.
Mr. Hodges, did you have a comment?
Sure. Well, what is stated as a fact is stated from a perspective.
No, the fact that I'm stating is, what he said is true about not being allowed to get the building, or it's being put, saying that what if somebody want to use the building, I mean, use the room. He's being told, because I was told the same thing when I called on his behalf, what if somebody wants to come in and use the building? My comment was basically almost the same thing that he said. Well, if somebody needs to use it that day, then give us another day, tell me another day that the building can be used, let me take that back to him, and see if they are willing to switch days, if they can't use it on Tuesday, maybe they want to use it on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, whatever other day is available.
Okay.
Mr. Hodges?
What is stated, is stated from a perspective, and the perspective is that the facility can't be used. That's not the case. The facility can be used. I think what the request is, is that he is scheduled to maintain a certain day for an extended period of time. That's what's not being permitted. As I think he said, he's, you used the facility before.
Yes.
The request was that you be allowed to use it, whether it's Tuesday or any other day, consistently throughout the year, that is, your regular scheduled time to meet and use that facility. There's two things to appreciate. One, this is under the guidance of the Recreation Commission. It's not under the guidance of the administration. But, as I understand it, the Recreation Commission, and perhaps through recommendation from staff, but nevertheless, the Recreation Commission does not want to schedule a full year, or six months, or a month of extended time. They are fine with saying, if somebody wants to come and schedule for a day or for a meeting, they will do that, but they're not going to schedule it for an extended period of time. And their reasoning is in part what was said. Again, it's a perspective. They don't want to be in a situation where you now have a limited number of citizens that have, in essence, booked the entire facility for the year, and if somebody else comes and wants to use that facility on that date, they in fact have to get in touch with this individual, or whoever it is, to say, is the facility available for this other person to use? They are basically okay with a day here, or a day here. They're not okay with it being scheduled, which I think is what you desire, an extended period of time, to know that that's your regular meeting place for the group that you're associated with. Now-
That's, that's partly correct.
Okay, my perspective.
Yeah, from your perspective, yes, yes, but they don't have to, they don't have to debate or do anything, only they, with me, only they have to do is say, that date that someone else already requested, since you have used it twice. That's all I need. If they want to go in further and say, we have other states available during that week, that's great, but if they want to suspend me for, for a day, or two days, or three days, only thing I just said is, just let me know, and you put anybody else in there that you want to.
And I think that's the difference, and again, this is something, you know, that they discuss, I'm not trying to argue the point. They don't want to be in the position of having to contact you to have another date available for them.
Yeah, but that's part of the problem. They're not doing anything.
Well, I'm not arguing the point.
They're not doing it, the building is sitting, the building is sitting over there, empty, empty, not being used. So you got, need to do something. I mean, if you don't do anything and say, hey, we're not going to do anything, let the building sit there, let the building rot, even though it's supposed to be used for, for a purpose. It's like, it's a lot easier to default on an if or something versus coming to my side. If things change, things change. I have no problem with that. Things change. I mean, I hope this city does get bigger.
If I can offer the comment, what you're saying, again, is a perspective. Probably right now, the building is empty, okay, right now, as we speak, and maybe at the times that you're referring to, but the building is not consistently empty, the building is heavily used. They rent that facility out, and they rent it out for purposes. There is a wear and tear on that building. So when they, in essence, allow, you know, citizens to use it, there, you know, there's a, there's a cost for that use. Again, I think you want the building without cost. You want a free facility to meet on a regular basis. That's what they're, you know, they're, they're not so much in favor of, that's the one thing. The, the second thing, before I missed the point, you did send an email, and that email was responded to. Now, I could find that email, but in that email, all that is explained in there, all the way to the point of, again, explaining, it's a Recreation Commission decision. I'd be glad to comment on it as administration. I even pointed out that, you know, even council has given that authority to the Recreation Commission. It's not a city manager authority, it's not a council authority, technically. It's a Recreation Commission authority, and you go to the Recreation Commission, and you ask them if they want to change that policy. But that's where it stands. Now, with that, I'll, I'll stop, because we can look, and we can investigate, we can find out, you know, what was said, but I leave with the last little point, and it's reflective here, and it's a matter of perspective. When you talked about the staff being rude, I did look into that, and I realized things then go the way that you want it, but I think that's not necessarily being rude, but it's being rather emphatic. The emphatic point is, you're wanting to have it and not seeing any reason why you couldn't be scheduled for, and the staff's direction of saying, we cannot schedule you for that, and I think as you, you know, persisted to, you know, try to get some explanation, they're, they're not assigned to try to go through all the explanation, they are assigned to say, if you want this room next week, or whatever it is, it's available, we can book you.
Let me, let me, let me explain about this rudeness. We got to take one more minute. About this rudeness, please, this rudeness. Now, I made, I made, I made a mistake on one of the dates, okay? I go over to the, I didn't realize that until I get over to the police station. I looked down there, I said, oh, oh, I made, I made a mistake on that date. And I said, oh, what am I going to do? Here it is, five minutes after 7:00, the lady at the police station called the person in charge. Person in charge said, I'm not at my computer, and they wouldn't do anything. Five minutes after, and I said, okay, let me have the room, someone come in that, that already signed up for the room, they can have the room. No one showed up, I knew no one was going to show up, they knew no one was going to show up, but yet still, I couldn't get the room. From upstairs to downstairs, I get told one thing, I go downstairs, the window starts filling up the paper, the lady jumped all over me. I said, hey, wait a minute, you ain't got to be so rough. I put that in my email to you. I said, hey, wait a minute, you don't have to be so rough towards me. This is what I want, based upon what I was told upstairs. And once she found out that, that I was telling the truth, she believed, I guess she believed, and she said, oh, well, this is what you need to do. Then she was able to help me out. But yet still, it's still, part of the problem when I missed that date, I could not see the exact dates on the calendar, because she said, oh, I can't show you that. I said, why not? It's government property, why can't you show me the date? So she had to read out all the dates, had to write them down, that's how I missed, missed one because of, because of that. I said, let me see the schedule so I can just write the dates down. I mean, that's not being, that's being very impolite, to me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else from the public? Forward, tell us who you are. Thank you.
Well, good evening, I'm State Representative Connie Pillage, and I'm very appreciative of hearing the concerns of the citizens here, and I wanted to say hello and goodbye to the City of Forest Park, Mayor Johnson, and members of council, and the clerk, and the legal counsel, and the city, city residents here. I've been representing you for the last six years in the state legislature, and it's been my great honor and privilege to do so. I, I never, never in my life imagined that I would be someone who represented anyone in the state legislature here in Ohio, but here I am, six years, six years into my term, finishing up my third term, and I've been there every month for you. I want to tell you that every day that I've walked into the State House, every day that I visited my office, every day that I walked into the chambers, I was so grateful that I had the privilege to do that. It really has been an amazing experience. I did go to Columbus hoping that I could have, serve our veterans, keep children healthy and safe, fight for our schools, and protect the environment, and I had the privilege of introducing legislation to do each of those things. Some of them became law, some did not, but I did raise the discussions among the people in the General Assembly. I am most proud of my work to help veterans, especially with the Veterans Bonus that, that I introduced in 2009, and that the people of Ohio overwhelmingly supported later that year. I most enjoyed visiting with constituents. I've held open office hours every single month since taking office in January of 2009, and a lot of times, twice a month, and I want to let you know that I get the most traffic here at the Forest Park Starbucks. So these are the most engaged citizens in the 28th Ohio House District. But I think what has been most fulfilling to me has been connecting people with their services. And again, it was a Forest Park family that, that I think of the most, a young veteran who had a terrible injury in the war, and it got worse over time, and his wife, and their, I think they had five kids, too proud to ask anyone for help, and then she tried to hold the family together as long as she could, and finally just couldn't do it anymore. So I worked with the Disabled American Veterans and the VA to help her get some, some help for her family. I, I want to thank you for allowing me to do this for you. It's really been an honor, and if you have any questions before you do that, I want to let you know that House Bill 5 is coming back. That's the municipal income tax bill. It was, it made it out of the House last spring, and I hear it's getting a lot of attention in the Ohio Senate right now, and so it may be back. It was my understanding that all my communities were against this bill, but if your position has changed, I'd appreciate letting, having you let me know soon, because we may vote on it soon. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions? Lives?
I just, I'm a veteran, so I just want to thank you, I followed some of what you were doing, and I think all the veterans, even though I'm years ago, but appreciate the efforts and the work you did, so thank you.
Thank you for your service. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? There you go. Thank you, State Representative Pillage. Moving on, Item Number Five, Reports of Standing Committees. The first of these standing committee reports is Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no reports this evening, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cottle, I have no items on the agenda for you for the next meeting. Do you have any to add? Second committee is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I was just asking that everybody get their evaluation to me as soon as possible, but it looks like I might only be missing two, Sally. Do you think it's two? Two that I'm missing?
So, any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, would you please get those into Councilwoman Holt, and Mrs. Hoffman, you will put that item, the evaluation on the agenda for the next council meeting. Thank you. Next committee report is Public Safety Committee, Councilman Lives.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no specific report for public safety, I did want to make mention I attended a couple events. One was the tree ceremony for Peggy Williams and Sue Smith, and it was very nice to recognize them. And then just to mention that I attended on November 11th, the EDC breakfast and recognition of businesses. What actually impressed me more was going to Home Depot shortly after that to get some repairs for the house, and the clerk there told me that they got an award, so apparently the information got out through the whole store that they were awarded, and they were very proud of that. And that's all I have to report, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Lives? Mr. Lives, I have on the agenda for you for the next meeting, the NRAC grant, Northern Boulevard project, and the right-of-way fees. Do you have any to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Next report is Public Improvement and Facilities Committee, Mr. Southall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report for public improvement in facilities tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none, Mr. Southall, I have no items on the agenda for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not, sir.
Next committee report is Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie, anybody from Ways and Means have any report for her? I have two items on the agenda for her, contractual agreements and salary resolutions. Next committee report is Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report for community development, but I would like to ask that the discussion that we just had related to the gentleman in the senior center, that we get an understanding from the Parker Recreation person, the policy in which they're invoking. the policy in which they're invoking, so that we can appreciate the procedures that are, that kind of got us to this point. I somewhat appreciate what's being said. However, I think we may be somewhat rigid in our application so that we can, we may need to give some guidance, if it is our responsibility to give that guidance, related to how they should move forward. I just, I'm not comfortable with what I just heard, even though I think the people are doing what they, they've been told, right?
No, they're not.
Okay, and that's fine.
Okay, they, uh, I would, I would say this. I have, I've looked into this three times, not one, not two, but three times. I know that the policy was made when I was on Parks and Recs, and there were some compromises made as to why this policy would be put into existence. I'll be happy to have both, uh, Ty Smith and Taffy to come to our next work session to explain those to you. And I think once you hear the explanation as to why the policy is there or the policies that there are, it's a lot more to it. Obviously, when you hear somebody give a, you know, there's a lot more to it than there is. But I would be happy to, to honor your request and have them explain it to you.
Yeah, I think we, we just need to appreciate what, what's being applied, right? So that, so we can, we can move forward or help to improve the situation.
Okay. Like I said, I, I will make sure that they're at the next work session. Somebody from there is at the next work session to go through that with you. Okay, you have, uh, I have no items for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Next item, intergovernmental relation and communication, that's mine. The only thing I would announce here is that the court dates have been set for next calendar year and put into place. Those have been determined and decided by the, uh, the clerk, the magistrate, and the prosecutor. And they have been set, and with any changes possible depending on circumstances. I have no, three items on the agenda for the work session, the magistrate contract, law director prosecutor's contract, and the public defender's contract. And those are the only three. I have none to add. Item number six is the mayor's report. I would just report that, uh, I attended the tree ceremony for the two ladies that Mr. Lives had mentioned, and I had mentioned that at the last meeting. Also attended the Economic Development Committee breakfast. It was very nicely done. And I, again, want to thank all those people who took part in that. I also attended the hem, uh, the environmental awareness breakfast last week where our environmental awareness program won a county award for innovation. And I want to thank, uh, the Environmental Awareness Board of Directors, as well as Director Wright-Win for having done the necessary work to put us in a position to receive that award. That committee does a great job. And almost every year, we, uh, at this event, we, the City of Forest Park receives some type of award. So I think we have a, an environmental awareness program that we all can be proud of. And again, I would like to thank those people for all of the energy and time that they put into it. That would conclude my report. I would answer any questions if there are any. Next report is the City Manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll, uh, just make note that I did provide council an executive summary, so that's available for the general public also to review. And it lists a number of different activities. But overall, the city's doing well. We are planning to issue the, the next issue of the progress. We anticipate that we'll have that completed by the end of this week. So if there are any comments related to that, you're certainly welcome to, to offer it. Again, just recognizing, we hope to have that out, not hope, we will have that out by the end of the week so we can make certain that we notify the residents about upcoming events, the holiday season, things along that line. And finally, I, I would just make note that the departmental reports have been completed and included with council's packet. They're also in file with the clerk of council. And that also is available for public inspection. So that would conclude my report. But I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the City Manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item is item eight of the reports, the first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Whitecroft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing specific to report on other than to bring attention to the fact that House Bill 661, uh, is going through the legislative branch. That is a remodel of the current compensation for all elected officials and appointed officials in the state of Ohio, even including a cost of living adjustment based on federal indexes. So that, that appears, since it went through commission, went through the House so quickly, to be easily passed in the near future. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Any questions for Mr. Whitecroft? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next report is the Clerk of Council, Mrs. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that Resolution Number 38-2014 was posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions for a Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is item number nine, new business. First item on the new business is ordinance number 15-2014, first reading. Would the clerk please read that, um, ordinance?
Ordinance number 15-2014. An ordinance revising Chapter 152 Building Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to address the posting of unauthorized removal of building department notices. Whereas it is sometimes necessary to designate vacant buildings and structures as unsafe or dangerous as a means to safeguard the public. And whereas it is also sometimes necessary to post notices of building code violations, stop work orders, and not approved for occupancy notices on buildings when the owner or other persons, persons with an interest in the property cannot otherwise be located. And whereas the unauthorized removal of posted notices from vacant hazardous condemned or otherwise uninhabitable buildings by persons unknown is an increase, is an increasingly troublesome occurrence, threatening the health, safety, and welfare of persons at or near such buildings. And whereas the city desires to expand and clarify building code language to better address these occurrences and to designate the unauthorized removal of posted notices and obstruction of public business so as to allow police enforcement of such particular obstruction. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that FPCO Section 152.23A be advised to add the herewith underlying language. Deletions crossed out and additions underscored. 152.23A notice. The building official shall insert, serve, written notice of violation of provisions of the code of violation of construction. Documentation approved thereunder or a violation of a permit or certificate issued under the code, insert or of unsafe building code, of building of condemnation of work stop, of stop work orders, or of any other orders of the building official on the persons responsible for such violation or for its remedy in accordance, insert with this code or with Section 109 of the OBC or the RCO as appropriate. The building official shall order the discontinuance of illegal action or condition the abatement or correction of any such violation or the taking of such action as may be necessary to achieve compliance with the code. And he shall serve written notice of such order on such responsible persons. Insert and shall post such notices or orders as appropriate. Section two, that the FPCO Section 152.23F be added as follows. Insert 15.2, 15.23F. Removal or posted orders. The unauthorized removal of posted orders from a building or structure which orders have been affixed to the building by any persons not so authorized by the building official shall be deemed to be, and to be obstruction of official business in accordance with FPCO 132.23 and be subject to a fine not to exceed $500 or imprisonment not to exceed six months or both by authority of ORC 715.67. Section three, this ordinance shall be enforced and take effect from and after the earliest date allowed, allowed by law.
I believe this is to be on the next, this to vote for next.
Yes.
Okay. The next new business item then would be a motion, item B. Councilwoman Holt.
I'd like to motion to appoint, um, the following individuals to their respective board of commissions. Okay, Melanie Veal, Civil Service Commission, expiring 11/30/17. Santreese Keys, Civil Service Commission, expiring 11/30/17. David Lives, Economic Development Commission, expiring 11/30/17. Richard Bedford, Economic Development Commission, expiring 11/30/17. George Cummings, Environment Awareness Board of Directors, expiring 11/30/17. Susan Anu-Furo, Environment Awareness Board of Directors, expiring 11/30/17. Dennis Smith, Planning Commission, expiring 11/30/17. Elise Evans, Recreation Commission, expiring 11/30/17. Reginald Sylvester, Recreation Commission, expiring 11/30/17. Rosalynn Moore, Recreation Commission, expiring 11/30/17. Dennis T.P., Tax Reboot Board. There's no expiration date on that one.
11/7/30.
11/30/17.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we, uh, point the following individuals to their respective boards and commissions with the dates of all of them expiring on 11/30/17. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. If the items see on the new business motion, Mr. Burns.
I move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
And move in second that we receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is passed unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned.